That was a 500 mile trip one day.
Brownsville School District ordered directions for meeting regular session on Thursday, June 20th at 7:00 PM in Brownsville Area School Auditorium. Falcon Drive, Brownsville Cave for general purposes and for consideration of emotional document 213-14 budget. Roll call please.
Mr. Assett.
He's on his way.
Mr. Bane.
Here.
Mr. Bashir.
Here.
Mrs. Broadwater. Mr. Delrose.
Here.
Mr. Dorsey.
Here.
Mr. Gammon.
Here.
Mr. Harney.
On his way.
And Mrs. Teravicki. Here.
Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to be relied with which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Okay, before I turn it over to the superintendent, just make an announcement that Senator Kusunik is on his way here. So, uh, we're going to proceed, but he's definitely on his way here, Senator Kusunik. Uh, superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, we are going to present our superintendents awards. Thank you for coming on summer's evening to enjoy the evening and presenting our superintendents awards for our students. They worked hard till the end of the year. We all did, and we appreciate their efforts, and we appreciate your efforts and support in what we're continuing to do here. So at this time, Mr. Burdar, would you please step up?
Before we hand out the certificate, just a reminder for parents or guardians, we will be, once the students escort the stage, we will be in the rear of the auditorium. We ask that you just please wait until all students from all the schools have received their awards before excusing your children. But at this time, I would like to recognize the students from Coxton Ahe Elementary, starting with kindergarten Jacob Davis. Not present from kindergarten this evening, we have Destiny Hackett and Lucas Stetson. Grade one Ryland Johnson. And Carolina Thomas. Not with us this evening from first grade, we had Jolene Tuttin. Grade two Melanie Mohatch. And Ian Ryan.
Just to let you know that the gifts and snacks are brought to you by the Big E and Mrs. Goody, Central.
Hey, at this time, I'd like to recognize the third grade students from Central Elementary. Grade three students not present this evening, Trey Sean Butts and Zachary Deal. Melanie Schumer. Grade four students not present, Gabrielle Batovsky and Aubrey Hogseth. And now for our fifth grade students, Madison Butcher. And James J.C. Welch.
Now at this point, Mr. Nester, middle school.
From sixth grade, he's not present with us, Jacob Sproul. Seventh grade Jessica Vance.
Good job, congratulations. Now the high school. Fourth I weeks superintendent recipients, senior Jacob Bavard. Sophomore Kristy Bull. At this time, maybe some of you have heard already, but we had our Students in Action Team of students that have been competing on a regional and now national level. They just got back last night from Washington DC where our team took second place nationally in the Jefferson Awards. The only school. The only school that beat them out was a high school from Chicago with 5,000 students. So they came in second, that's the Silver Award, so congratulations. And I believe Mrs. Delarose is here. Stella, do you want to come up with your trip?
So over the last two years, a group of six students has been working to restore the area in downtown that right now has all the construction going on. And this year, these students were successful in raising $43,000 to go towards this project. And so, we went to DC over the last few days, and they were recognized like Dr. Sabini said. And so, it was very humbling being there with all of the other national awardees. And it's my pleasure that these students were able to bring this award back to Brownsville to give us even more hope and more inspiration to do more things in the future.
It made me disdain a speaker for the students. But I would just like to say that this award does not just belong to us, it belongs to the Brownsville community. Without the community's support and dedication and everything that they have been behind us, we could not have done it without them and all of their support. So I thank the community and I thank all of you. But this award isn't just representative of Brownsville, it's also representative of the Pittsburgh region. So you can say that we have won on behalf of Pittsburgh, Fayette County, and Brownsville. We're very excited and the prestige that this has brought to Brownsville. And I would just like to thank you again. Christian Sessing.
And Francesca LaGross.
And not here with us this evening is Jenna Schumer, Brad Ridgich, and Alexa Sharp. Thank you, guys.
Good job, well done for Mrs. Delarose. You put a lot of time and effort into it as well as Mrs. Bellback, so thank you. Also, to make an announcement, our entrepreneurship class has been in competitions for the last three years. This year, our troops, our group came in, in the state regionals, second place in Pittsburgh. Fortunately, the students that were involved were unable to make it because of vacation and work. But under Mr. McManus, our students again have taken second place in the state regionals in the entrepreneurship program. So I want to congratulate them as well. Finally, and I believe this was said before, our video production class was in a competition, participated in a competition at Robert Morris University. It was a national competition based on style, based on quality of video production. And our students under Mrs. Woolwich took first place in video production at Robert Morris. So three national programs, three national awards for Brownsville this year. So congratulations to them. Again, those students were working and Mrs. Woolwich, he was on vacation. So congratulations to them as well. Finally, and that is the reason why Senator Kusunik was to be here this evening. He had heard about the progress that we're making and has senatorial awards for each national award group. So hopefully, he'll be here, if not, we'll get him here as soon as we can to present those awards to our school, to our students. And finally, Mr. Delarose notified me shortly after school was out that this graduating class has the most students attending a post-secondary institution in the history of Brownsville, at 56 percent. That's unheard of in a high school. Fifty percent of our students who graduated have gone to some type of post-secondary education. And that is attributed to you folks, the parents, the students, our teachers, and the support of the board. So thank you and congratulations.
She's freaking out over there from her dad. Is that normal in your household?
Yeah, that's every day in my household.
You just ignore it? So you've got nothing but drama in your home front?
Yeah, at work.
And work too?
Yeah.
Oh.
I never expect.
Take care Lynn, baby.
I'm staying.
Yeah, I want to, since I'm here, no way.
You're waiting one out there?
Yeah.
Should have been here. Sierra wants to ask you something about your trip. She's out there.
You coming out more?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit through this.
Yeah, okay. We'll probably be back in once we're just soon it comes.
Let me come sit next to her.
Item three, Republican. Public remarks on agenda items, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name. On agenda items.
Can we go?
Yes.
I don't know if I'll start the class now or not.
Is the band on the agenda?
What?
Is the band on the agenda?
Twelve presentations.
Uh, yeah.
So.
Yes, go ahead.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. First of all, glad that the teachers got their contract after they waited so many years. This is my third year that I've been involved with the band. This third year, we have no band director. Now that Mr. Kavasik's position is going to be open, and we have no band director, so anyway, that you can hire a music teacher, band, full-time. We had the young fellow last year, Mr. Johnson, did one job, but he had three assistants. They did not get paid. We went to more functions and parades last this year than we have in the past. We are invited to go to Merrittstown, we have no band director, go to Fourth of July. Last year, we went, me personally and the other mothers took the kids out to Merrittstown, and we did what we did. We're supposed to go to Hall groups, July 13th, over here in Hiller. We did it last year, we have, have a band. This year, we don't, so we can't go. We want to go to Merrittstown, but we have no one to teach the drummer, we lost our drummer. And another thing is, we went to the schools, we picked up 12 kids this year for next year. We lost five kids. Three was the auxiliary, the girls. We picked up 10 for this coming year. And we picked up 12 in the elementary school that are wanting to join the band. We will have close to 70. We haven't had 70 kids in a band in so many years. So we would appreciate if you would find us a band director that will stay, not an after-school director, but a music teacher slash band director like we had years ago.
Right now, what we have to do is accept Mr. Kavasik's resignation as lead of the area, and we are advertising in the Herald and Tribune to do a band director.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, item four, adoption of agenda related materials for cooperation events. Motion by Director Teravicki, second by Director Delarose, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item five, approval of the May 16th ordinance. Motion by Director Teravicki, second by Director Bang, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item six, Director Bang, board treasurer.
Approval of the May 2013 year old fund cafeteria budget, Title I and Title II, A2D, treasurer, by handful.
Motion by Director Bang, second by Director Teravicki, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gammon.
Yes.
Mr. Harney.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teravicki.
Item seven, approval of the following funds you have before you. Motion by Director Bang, second by Director Teravicki, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Teravicki. And Mr. Harney. Mr. Gammon.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose. Mrs. Broadwater. Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Bane.
Yes.
And Mr. Assett.
Yes. Item eight, solicitor report. Jacob Davis. Thank you. Education Director Dorsey.
Item eight, I move to approve the attached service contract agreement from our school district nominated incorporated for the 2013-14 school year. First by students. (Inaudible).
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Teravicki, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bang.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gammon.
Yes.
Mr. Harney.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teravicki.
Item eight, I move to approve the attached service contract agreement from our school district nominated incorporated for the 2013-14 school year. First by students. (Inaudible).
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Teravicki, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Teravicki. Mr. Harney.
Yes.
Mr. Gammon.
No.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Bang.
Yes.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
I move to approve the patch of the (inaudible) incorporated partial compensation for the 2013-14 school year.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Teravicki, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Item D, I move to approve the attached elementary special education agreement for services with adult education for the 2013-14 school year.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Teravicki, questions?
Mrs. Teravicki. Mr. Harney.
Yes.
Mr. Gammon.
No.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Bang.
Yes.
And Mr. Assett.
Item eight, I move to approve the education placement of a student of less than expected for the extended school year, 2013, July 1st, 2013, July 50, 2013, in amount of $2,645.
Motion by Director Dorsey, second by Director Teravicki, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Assett.
Yes.
Mr. Bang.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
No.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Gammon.
No.
Mr. Harney.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teravicki.
I want to make one comment on the education. We've paid a lot of money out for other agencies and services. We said years ago about 100,000, we saved us so much money when we kind of just let the ball drop on our 100,000 bet. We discussed earlier this year that we were going to get that program going again, and I think we need to make sure that happens if it really is a cost-saving measure. Because we see all the amounts we're paying out for all these other agencies, I think we're going to be paying that amount if we can do it ourselves and keep our kids here a lot of time. We're bound, we're bound to.
Right.
I know, I know, we're maybe a special. With the Del by and things like that, but I mean, a lot of our own kids still go in those other slots. That's, that's one of the reasons why we've minimized the IU so we can bring our back. Some of these were pretty much bound to be that.
Personnel, Director Delarose.
I may move to extend the (inaudible) contract to the (inaudible) district for a period of four years, July 1st, 2013, including June 30, 2017, contract term conditions, now to remain the same, with the exception of the (inaudible) three years.
Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Bang, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Teravicki.
No.
Mr. Harney.
No.
Mr. Gammon.
No.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
Yes.
Mr. Bashir.
Yes.
Mr. Bang.
Yes.
And Mr. Assett.
Item B, moves to accept the resignation of Mr. Greg Johnson, band director, effective June 23rd, 2013.
Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Bang, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Item C, I move to power Janet Taylor as head professional special education teacher on step two, $2,340, last week, bringing additional PDA contrarian, effective August 22nd, 2013.
Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Bang, questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Teravicki.
Yes.
Mr. Harney.
Yes.
Mr. Gammon.
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Delarose.
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible). I miss the (inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
exams for the 2013-14 school year at a cost of $7.50 per each student. Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Bang. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bang?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harby?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekian?
Item E. I move to hire Roland Matt, Roland B M D, for school dental services for the 2013-14 school year to be compensated at a rate of $2 for student.
Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Terebekian. Questions?
I would like to go with Roland. $2 for student. That's not great. I'm supporting that. I have a motion and a second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terebekian?
Yes.
Mr. Harby?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bang?
Yes.
And Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Item B. I move to accept the resignation of Mr. Greg Johnson, band director effective June 23rd, 2013. Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Acid. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item C. I move to accept the resignation of Mr. Greg Johnson, band director effective June 23rd, 2013.
Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Acid. Questions?
Yes. This year, all these new days, is he also ready for a new schooling that we pay for? I'd like to have a copy of his contract, which you should know that he has to know. I know the last administrator that left here did want to return and run the school. However, we had one teacher that left maybe three years ago, two, three or two, two or three years ago, they had to return. There was a previous administrator prior to my coming here that left and did not have to return. Now, the 60 days is out of his contract, he stays 60 days. Here's my thought, especially on Monday. I want to sign that about you. I want one by him, one by Mrs. Handler, and everything, every item, every student, every schedule, everything is ready for our students for 2013-2014 school year. This was a shock to the board that, you know, Mr. Delarose is leaving. And I think that's owed especially to the students and the taxpayers in this group. So I want to, I think we should wait, or do you know that he is 60 days that he should stay? That way, keep all his work, because I know he was so sick, and he probably didn't need to cancel a lot of things. And I know about, it's just scheduled, we know it's more than scheduled. There is, and most of that, Mr. Delarose, if you want to.
The schedule is done. The school group plan started in, home rooms are done. The student activity budget is complete. Anyone wants to come up and see it, I can show you how they're planned with that 60 days. If you want me to do more.
It's just the 60 years.
I understand.
If you owe us 60, you can see the contract, that's what I'll do.
That's, it is a contract, you may know, you can hold me, that's fine. I'm just reassuring you guys that I'm not going to leave you next person high draft. It's already done. I still care about the kids here. I want to see them succeed. And Dr. Sweeney and I showed Mr. McQuaid that the schedule is done, Mrs. Ruff has already suspended her college seventy. I mean, all the seniors, all the.
Yeah, we want to sign all the sheet, Dr. Sweeney, the view, Mrs. Handler, and I am assured that on day one of school, everything's in order. And I think he should give us the 60 days.
You know, I don't know, we discuss all the personal stuff in the public, maybe they should be tabled until we figure out what we're doing.
I need to table.
How second, because I, you know, project is exactly.
Yeah, but sure, well, I did know, I did ask my parents, and I didn't hear their answers.
Yeah, she said nothing.
Have to consider that. Previous motion is second. Previous motion.
Motion to table. It's a motion to table. It's a motion to table. We got to do a vote on the table. I made a motion, it's a due second. Yes. Roll call, please.
Okay, this is a, roll call on a motion to table this motion. Is this a motion? Okay. Mrs. Broadwater? Mr. Acid?
No. Are you tied into? Can you hear though?
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yeah. It's not.
No to table, yes. I have three notes not to table. Mr. Broadwater?
Yes, to table.
Mr. Dorsey?
No.
Mr. Harby?
No.
And Mrs. Terebekian?
Yes. Now you have to back the vote. Motion to the second, pardon, right of hand. I have a, I have a motion to the second, pardon.
Mr. Delarose and Mr. Acid moved a motion to accept the resignation. Why do you do call, roll call that one? Okay. Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bang?
Yes.
Mr. Harby?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekian?
Yes.
Now you have to back the vote. Motion to the second, pardon, right of hand. I have a, I have a motion to the second, pardon.
Mr. Delarose and Mr. Acid moved a motion to accept the resignation. Why do you do call, roll call that one? Okay. Mr. Acid?
Yes.
Mr. Bang?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Delarose?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harby?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terebekian? Motion passed.
Motion to the executive for what? Motion for executive session. Motion for executive session. Second, Director personnel. We may have that seven. All in favor? Aye. Microphone on, check your mic. Okay, I need a motion to come back in session. Motion by Director Terebekian. Second by Director Harby. All in favor? Aye. Back in at 7:50. We were in there for personnel. We all still head to executive session Monday night for personnel. Right now, I'm going to turn to Director Bang to make a comment. Mr. Delarose, sorry. I want to make a comment on your departure here. I sat in your office quite a few times this year, and I think the people need to know how touching this is. We had quite a few students been asked for help in their grades. I come to you, we sat down with those students, and those students didn't only improve their grades, every one of those students made on the roll. That was a special feeling to me. And, you know, I, I want to thank you for that. I hope our next principal can carry that on, because I think you'd need to be commended for that actions. I know it's part of the job, but love isn't something that everybody has. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. President, Justin, real quick, appreciate everything you did for Pennsylvania National Guard. Your support of my organization is tremendous, and appreciate you, and wherever you go next, we'll be looking for your help back too.
Thank you. Thank you. Justin, I appreciate your time and effort for this district. You will be missed, but good luck down up there. Don't give away any of our athletic secrets up there. Okay. Obviously. Just hard for you to, you have to be treated that way. All that you've done, worked three years for not an extra dollar as an assistant. You and Mrs. Handler, that did it after school. Alternative education programs that saved thousands and thousands of dollars. This year, working with a high school, it's unheard of anywhere in the country to have a high school operate without a vice principal. You did it, and you did it in a stellar way. You'd say enough about you. Thank you. I think, Justin, you know how it feels. We'll be seeing Mr. Abbey up there, sure, he's a solid, solid part of that native. Anyway, good luck, my friend.
I wish luck too. I just don't like seeing any more administrators or teachers or anybody in a situation in a public session like that. I mean, a lot of like, behind the scenes or whatever. Our people don't deserve that much.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we're at item G. Item D. I move to accept the resignation of Mr. Greg Johnson, band director effective June 23rd, 2013. Good promotion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Terebekian. Questions? Just a question. I remember hiring this division, how long ago was that?
Four years. Four years. He worked eight years for.
Was he on leave for?
He was off for two.
So, so he was off for two. Okay, the motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item H. I move to offer out to the districts of participants regular workplace through Charlotte. Second. Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Bang. Questions? Just a question. I, I remember hiring this division, how long ago was that?
Four years. Four years. He worked eight years for.
Wasn't he on leave for?
He was off for two.
So, so he was off for two. Okay, the motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item H. I move to offer out to the districts of participants regular workplace through Charlotte. Second. Motion by Director Delarose. Second by Director Bang. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Before we go to finance, the principals, any comments from the principals? Shout your dear. You're bringing, oh, well, just if you have anything now's a chance. I'd like to say it's a pleasure working with Justin. I supported everything that he did prior to making the move to the assistant principal to the principal of high school, and I want to wish him the best of luck. Thank you. Sort of missing. Thank you, Mr. Nester. Anyone else? Mr. Harby, anything to make?
Yeah, I appreciate, I know Justin since he was a brat.
Can you coach him?
Coached him all through, all the way. And it was a joy for me to work with him, and he'll be sorely missing. Appreciate him a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else with administration need to make any comments? Okay. Finance Director Bang.
I'd like to consider the most adopted 2013-2014 fiscal budget in the amount of $25,132,545. Estimated revenues of $23,991,160 with a $1,141,385 fund balance setting in Millers of Bead County at 16.57 mils and Washington County at 91.13 mils. That is no increase.
Motion by Director Bang. Second by Director Harby. Questions?
Comment?
Sure.
Mr. President, two things, actually. First thing, I just want everybody to understand the fact that the governor takes a lot of heat for apparently cutting budgets of school districts. When you look at our budget for this year, we're getting $16,560,000 compared to last year's $16,000, $16,800, right? So it's actually an increase. So we're getting almost $500,000 more from the state than we were, than we did last year. The deficit where we're seeing a problem, like not mistaken, is in Title I funds. Roughly $500,000 less from the federal government than we're getting from, than we did last year. So that's where some of our problems. So, the second point I'd like to make is, and I made, I made this point last month, that we really needed to talk more about this budget. Have some finance meetings, get into the weeds with it, and we didn't do it. And I said last month that if we didn't get, then start talking about some specific items that I could, I would not support the budget. I cannot support the budget at this time because we haven't had those meetings. And many of the motions that I voted no on previously for the, were for those exact reasons, that we don't have, we have not talked about this budget in enough detail. Mike, I think you did a great job, but I think the board should have got together as well to talk about each one of these different highlights, to look at some possible cost angulation.
The cuts, the cuts definitely lost, the federal cuts. Federal money was cut, they expected the state to make up that money, which the state really shouldn't be responsible for making up federal money. Then the state and the federal expects the taxpayers to make up for that. And that's not the way it should be. That's pretty much the process. Like you said, the state and the government corps is getting a lot of heat, really, the main problem started with the federal. And I agree with you, in January, I was asking for budget meetings. I think you did a good job coming up with this budget on really pretty much what was coming in, what was going out, with no direction whatsoever from the board. And I sound like broke the record a lot, the board should be more involved in the budget, giving you direction. Because that's how, three times since I've been on this board, that we've gone from a fund balance to, oh my God, we need to raise taxes, we have no money. And I hope in the next year, we want to have some meetings to go through suggestions
coming in, what was going out, with no direction whatsoever from the board. And I sound like broke the record a lot. Board should be more involved in the budget, giving you direction. Because that's how, three times since I've been on this board, that we've gone from a fund balance to, oh my God, we need to raise taxes, we have no money. And I hope in the next year, we want to have some meetings to go through suggestions of maybe cuts or changes that we have to do, because we need to do that, because we do see possibility of less money coming in. So we need to be prepared for that for the next budget. We were given this budget, what, four days before the planned session where we were supposed to vote on the kind of the budget? No real meetings, it was just here, here it is, if you want it or not. I can't support it either. Although I totally agree with no tax increases. For that reason, I mean, we had no participation.
Mike, is this the final budget?
This will be the final budget. And I understand, Joe, we can reopen and relook at this budget at any time through the year.
Look, I, no, you reopen?
What's the government, what's the official margin?
Once they pass, they give you thirty days to reopen the business.
Right. We don't know, this is what projected is, and then when the state out, when the state passes theirs, hook for next meeting, and we know exactly what we're getting, then we can reopen. Is that right?
We'll give you thirty days.
We have a meeting in Utah.
Unfortunately, that was said like there was no financial budget meetings.
There was one. There was one. And the one, there was only two people set up.
Correct.
But that was right before, in fact, it was when it was handed to the board. In January, I asked for meetings, in February, I asked for meetings, we had no meetings. That's what I'm trying to say. It's, our job as the board to give directions and try to protect the taxpayers' money.
Well, we did have.
Just saying, okay, we're going to eat up some fund balance and do this and do that, that's the way it's going to go, but we never actually looked at the budget.
Andy, we did have a meeting in the winter.
In the winter?
We had, we had one. Me, John, and one other person showed up. It was his girl.
That were in March, April. So two meetings, really, two meetings is enough to.
It's hard to schedule a meeting when nobody can come.
Okay.
As they say, a lot of the restraints did not happen in the last few months. They've been over the last two or three years. This board has buckled down to have a fund balance because we were definitely in the red.
Agreed again. I think it's great. I think we're financially stable. Again, I made the comment last month that no meeting, I can't support it.
As compared to other districts, as compared to other districts, I think we still can stand very well against districts outside our area who are in the red. We are in the black because of the last two years, three years of all of us making the tough cuts, tough cuts that are beginning to show now. Still, there's work to be done, there's no question about it.
That's what I'm saying. We've got to be proactive on this.
You know, one of the biggest battles we got, guys, if you've got to remember, is like you said, you know, we get $500,000 here, but we lose $500,000 there. But the cost of living, we gave our teachers raises, our administration raises, everybody got cost of living raises that goes on. You know, we're going to spend $500,000 more next year in salaries. Okay? But there's nowhere in that budget where we get to make that up. We've got to take a week or so, or we've got to find a new restraint. And that's what, that's pretty much what we've been doing for the last two years, the shred of water. I mean, that's, that's the real vibe.
Okay, well, I have a question.
Mr. President, I just want to call, and I respect what you're saying, and I understand this, and we have, in lieu of having formal meetings, and I've said it before, not just for finance, but building some grounds, personnel, you know, people will take these chair positions and we trust them, you know, to be working with the people that they need to have made the good decisions and come to us with informed information as board members. And myself, as a board member, trust that that's occurring, that the information I'm getting, I can, I can trust from Mr. Giuliani, from Mr. Bane, myself involved in living the meetings. So I can support the meeting based on that, saying, hey, this information, they're working on it, they're meeting, they're taking the right intervals and putting the right information out there. So, yes, you know, we have enough meetings, and I agree, probably not, but I am comfortable that the work that needs to be done is being done confidently, confidently.
When I asked for the meetings prior, it was always said, oh, we really can't have a meeting yet because we don't know what the state's going to give us, we don't know what it gives. So then, like I said then, you figure, well, we're not getting anything in the work, we work what we have. At least we have a template and a place to move with. Just be proactive.
Twenty-five million dollars is a lot of money. I really.
And I understand. Like you said, you're saying trust in the committee members, but we've done that in the past, and three times in the past since I've been on the board, when we did that, we went in depth. I mean, all of us got to be on that. I agree, you had a committee member spearhead that, but we all got to be on point.
I agree.
On the finances of this district.
Yeah, it's committed.
Because I'm not raising anybody else's taxes.
It's committed numbers and administrative.
And my fear is next year, somebody's going to come to board and say, hey, we need to raise taxes, we don't do that. We, as a board, need to do something so we don't get that.
I think a motion and a second, correct?
Yes. Message by Mr. Bane, second by Mr. Harvey.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrabecchia?
No.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
No.
Mr. Dorsey?
No.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
And Mr. Assen? Motion, I've got it. For no, yeah, for tie.
Consider a motion to acknowledge the quote for computerized 2013-2014 school real estate per capita tax deficits and bills from Diamond Marketing Solutions for the printing of the Bay County/Washington Real Estate Tax Bills and Tax Debuts at $496 per thousand per capita tax, $496 per thousand for real estate taxes.
Motion.
Questions, is that the same company that did it last year?
Same company, same price, third year one of them.
Motion by Director Bane.
Yes.
Second by Director Delros. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assen?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terrabecchia?
See, consider a motion to adopt the attached homestead, farmstead resolution for the 2013-2014 school term.
You're making the motion?
Yes.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion.
Consider a motion to adopt the attached resolution of the Board of School Directors of the Broadwater Area School District authorizing the collection of the school project taxes and installments.
You're making the motion. As you're saying, consider, I mean, since you're making the motion. I need somebody to make the motion. Motion by Director Terrabecchia, second by Director Delros. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Time, questions are in the table quick.
Is this for some, is this set up for people to make statements?
Yeah, same motion to adopt the last two, three years.
But that's a business for a fancy.
Homesteads, it's. Everyone basically.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion.
I need somebody to make a motion to acknowledge the notification of Bay County Tax Bureau and authorization of the President of the Board to sign for the consent of the sale of the following partial ideas for regulatory tax sale on behalf of the district.
Motion by Director Gammon, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion. We have one up.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
You got it.
Consider a motion to approve the purchase of workers compensation insurance for UCM City to cost $79,360. I move.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Harvey. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assen?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mrs. Broadwater?
What's going on?
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terrabecchia?
I move to approve Ohio County Insurance for Black and White, Aurora, Harris, and Mission Insurance, it cost $85,919,000.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrabecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assen?
Yes.
I move to authorize the payments of bills for the month of July 2013. A list of payments that are made during the month of July will be submitted to the Board for the August 2013 meeting.
Motion by Director Bane, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion. One opposition, Athletic Director Assen.
I move to hire Mrs. Natalie Montech as middle school head, cheerleader, coached for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step two of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Delros. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Assen?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrabecchia?
I move to hire Mr. Robert Holman, assistant varsity football coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step one of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrabecia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assen?
Yes. I move to hire Mr. Larry Lammon, assistant varsity football coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step two of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Bane. Questions? Roll call, please.
And Mrs. Terrabecia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assen?
Yes. I move to hire Mr. Scott Robach, assistant varsity football coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled $4,400 for the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrabecia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assen?
Yes. I move to hire Mr. Charles Morton as assistant varsity football coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step one of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? Same question, all paperwork in order.
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrabecia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assen?
Yes. I move to hire Mr. Joseph Jenkins, assistant varsity football coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step two of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Assen?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrabecia?
I move to hire Mr. Jeremy Thomas as assistant varsity football coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step one of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? Same question.
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrabecia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
And Mr. Assen?
I move to hire Mr. Philip Ploton as middle school head football coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step two of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? Same question, all paperwork in order.
Yes, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrabecia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assen?
Yes. I move to hire Mr. Reginald Brunes as assistant middle school football coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step one of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? All in favor? Please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Assen?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrabecia?
I move to hire Mr. Salem Goss, varsity head soccer coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step one of the athletic salary scale.
Motion by Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? If there are any, I have the paperwork in order. Roll call.
Mrs. Terrabecia?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assen?
Yes. I move to hire Mr. Salem Goss, varsity soccer coach for 2013-2014 school year. Conversation settled step one of the athletic salary scale.
By Director Assen, second by Director Terrabecchia. Questions? Paperwork in order. That is my Monday night, I was calling it Sunday. Brother. Roll call, please.
Mr. Assen?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Terrabecia? Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teravicki?
I move to approve a request from Mr. Edvona, volunteer services, assistant soccer coach for 2013-2014 school year.
Motion by Director Assett, second by Director Teravicki. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Owe.
I move to approve vector security as the security monitoring system for central Gosschop and A elementary schools at the following rates. Monthly monitoring fee, $19.95 per month for building, open close reports, $12 per month for building.
Second by Director Harvey, second by Director Bane. Questions? Role call, please.
Mrs. Teravicki?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Gammon?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Delros?
Yes.
Mr. Bashir?
Yes.
Mr. Bane?
Yes.
Mr. Assett?
Yes.
Item nine, public comments on anything non-adjunct agenda items. Anyone else who speaks, please come forward, state your name, nature of business, anyone.
Mr. President. Go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
Hi, my name is Mary See.